Oh, was Sandy presenting? Should we wait?
They're all.
Yeah, they're all.
Okay. Do you want me to wait? We can wait. Welcome, everyone, to the Gray Town Council Workshop for February 6, 2024. Just as a reminder before we get started, the 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock block of this workshop is focused on the Resiliency Committee's update on the Community Resiliency Partnership with the state. And then, beginning at 6 o'clock, we will begin the input session for our FY '25 budget, if people are hanging on for that. I will begin with roll call. Councilor Height?
Here.
Councilor Meany?
Present.
Councilor McGuire?
Present.
Councilor Gass?
Present.
And I am Councilor Chappell. We may need another five minutes or so as there is... Okay. Do you want to get started, or do you?
Yay!
Oh, hello.
Hi, Rod.
We're just going to take a couple minutes here while people get settled in, and then we'll begin with the presentation from the Resiliency Committee in a moment. Kyle, there's some slides that go with the presentation this evening. I think they're in the packet, if that's probably easiest.
I think Sandy emailed them, right?
Oh, did you? Oh, okay.
I sent him an email.
All right, you might have an email, Kyle. Yeah. Just a reminder to everyone coming up. Just a reminder to introduce yourselves and state your address when you begin.
I'm happy to do that. I'm waiting for the slides. My name is Rachel Lynn Rumson. I live at 22 Taylor's Trail in New Gloucester, and I'm here tonight in a consulting role with the Resiliency Committee.
While you're waiting for the slides to come up, would it make sense for you to just provide a little background about the Community Resilience Partnership?
Sure. Sure. So, in 2021, the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the Future was charged with the task of implementing the Maine Won't Wait Four Year Climate Action Plan, which is being reviewed right now for updates. And through that program, they identified 72-ish projects that they were willing to fund with zero match from municipalities, some of which Gray has already started doing or has already done. And I applied to become a service provider so that I could do the public engagement necessary to build a grassroots understanding about what needed to happen. Yay, there it is. Community Resilience Partnership is the program. They have a website that will have more information on it if you are so inclined. There's a few different enrollment steps, so the purpose of our workshop tonight is to get your feedback on some priority projects that were identified during the engagement process, which I'll go over in just a moment, and to get your input on a resolution, which we have some model language already in your packets, and then go over next steps about where we're at in the process and when you might expect to see us again, and then hopefully we can just have a back-and-forth. But everyone's going to present a little bit, and I get the first couple of slides. Shaleen Shavchenko regrets. She thought budget was first, so she's not able to be here in person. Okay, so I won't read this slide, I promise you, but the engagement process has been extensive. It has included public workshop as required by the program. We also did interviews with stakeholders in the community who might know specific needs of the community. We also did a survey, like a Google-type survey, and we did a bunch of youth programming. So, I went into Granite Gloucester High School, got myself a job there, so I had an official hat to wear inside the door, and we had a climate action resilience advisory... What do they call them? I was an advisor, and it was a club. That's what it was. It was a club. And so, that infrastructure is there, and the willingness to engage with the school district is there, and we've built that as we've gone. And there's probably going to be some graduated youth in the community logging in to observe this evening who enrolled in my internship program, which was also part of my grant to provide services. And they're eager to do further youth engagement on the topic and to do some public education as well. So, next. Okay, so the priority criteria... So, there's going to be five big ideas coming to you tonight from this committee, and the criteria that they use to make these decisions, I encourage them to be intentional about that, and not just pie in the sky, but why? Why this? And so, one of the reasons that they picked it was it was aligned with the charge as-written for their committee. They found community support evident in all the engagement strategies we used. It has relevance to the comprehensive plan in the open space plan. It's relevant to town staff and the council's work list, which we had an insight track on. And support... It's accessible support resources available to assist, and that means that it might be doable, it might be actionable beyond the capacities of the town. And then clarity of plan to implement, short-term versus long-term. They really thought about what is realistic. So, without further ado... Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm going to say a couple more things. If you would go to pages 24 and 25 in your packet, you will see a self-evaluation form. That is one of the enrollment documents required by the Community Resilience Partnership for towns to submit in order to be eligible for the zero-match funding, up to $50,000. They... I guess the front page is the part I want you to notice today, and if you have read it through and have any questions, we can definitely answer those after our presentation. But the nuts and bolts are in the gray boxes on the front page, sort of the summary for you, the executive summary for you. On page 31, you'll see that the committee has assembled a project, an appended project list, that includes all the relevant projects that they have narrowed down to the five based on the criteria I just mentioned. And finally, the resolution language is in your packet, and I'm hoping that we can get your input on that tonight and see that in a future agenda, because those three documents are submittables, deliverables to the state for this program. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Hello, I'm Sandy Carter. I live at 186 Shaker Road, and I'm a member of the Resiliency Committee. Next slide, please. So, using the criteria that Rachel just shared, the committee actually worked individually to come up with our top three to five priorities. And much like the village visioning session, we were pleased to find that almost all the priorities were the same across the team, and they matched the community outreach data. When we placed... Then, we placed them in priority order based on importance and impact, but also resource availability, which Rachel touched on, which is... Which will allow us to lower the impacts on staff and allow for deliverables this year. So, you can see on this slide, these are the top five priorities that we came up with. One is a watershed plan. Number two is climate change, education outreach. Number three is update the EMA Hazard Mitigation Plan. Number four is increase public transit ridership, alternative transportation. And number five is conduct a baseline for energy usage, which is kind of a catch-all, and you'll hear a little bit more about how we're drilling down on that in a future slide. We're going to each give you a little bit more detail on each of the priorities, starting with the next slide, please. The number-one priority is E3, and it says O1 on there, and then it says E3. The E3 matches the state list, and the language that we have to use here is directly pulled from that state list, but the towns or local groups get to drill down and do specific items underneath that language. So, it's to create or update a watershed plan to identify flooding and water quality priorities and adaptation options. This work rose to the top priority as essential to the comp plan goals, was identified in the village visioning as a concern, it's a critical part of the open space plan, it was identified as a priority by... In prior council discussions, some of which I was involved in, and it is... Has at least one item already on your work plan, which is the phosphorus ordinance. And there are a good number of resources available in addition to the committee members outside of staff who are ready and willing to assist us with this work. We held a joint workshop with representatives from the various lake associations, and we have Cheryl Welch here with us today. We have others that might be online, and others send their regards. We had this workshop so we could gain a better insight on the issues that are around the lakes and in the watersheds, and what work was being done in other towns. And they are, to put it very mildly, very eager to assist us with this work, and we appreciate that. We also spoke to Cumberland County Soil and Water, and they have confirmed capacity to assist us with this work and are also very excited to help us. We have scheduled another committee workshop on the 12th of this month, and we're going to dive into this priority into more detail in anticipation of a possible grant application. And we're looking to come back to the council at the first March meeting in a workshop format to bring that information to you. And as we all know, any rules, policies, or ordinances are only successful with robust education, outreach, and communication, because enforcement, as we all know, is extremely difficult. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chelsea to talk about our priority number two, which covers those three things.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shaleen, that's right. Chelsea's, like, panicked. She's like, no!
So, priority number two, climate change, education, and outreach. This one can be bundled with any of the other priorities. So, we just heard about the watershed program. The other ones you're about to hear about can also have a climate change, education, outreach specific to those targets. So, this is project number H2, and it's really repeating some of the engagement work we've done already in a very targeted way. And we want to make sure that we do community outreach in Gray so it's to benefit everyone in the community. And so, there's a social equity point system within the grant application process that favors projects that seek to do engagement for socially vulnerable folks. And in some of our projects, the whole town is vulnerable, say, the tax base affects everybody. And some of our projects might need to have some nuance around that. So, next slide, please. That said, there's a few different pairings with these projects yet to be prioritized, but amplifying public health advisories, just building that communication infrastructure for getting the word out, and especially to the vulnerable populations, but bringing people together at the right times and the right places that are not competing with emergency protocols in the town but are aligned with emergency protocols in the town. Engaging youth and resilience, clean energy and energy use reduction, engaging populations that have vulnerable to climate impacts in resilience, and clean energy and emissions reduction, depending on the priorities in the town. And I think that's all. Unless you have questions, well, you can ask me later if you have a question. And I'm back. Next slide, please.
And I think that this was actually part of what you've already said, which is that the communication priority that we came up with is number two, but really, we find that we're going to build that as we go. So, for everything that we work on, our goal will be to work on that communication outreach and education with that. So, next slide, please. Our third priority is to update the EMA Hazard Mitigation Plan to address changing future conditions and identify specific strategies to reduce vulnerability and increase resilience to climate change impacts. And this item had several sub-items, like the communication one. Next slide, please. And those are just to, as examples, develop and enhance early warning systems and community evacuation plans, develop a storm debris management plan, and the most important one, we felt, was establish this peer-to-peer program for checking in on vulnerable community members during extreme heat and cold events. But more importantly, we recognize that the core goal of an emergency management plan and one of the major goals of the Climate Action Plan are essentially the same, and that is to prepare and adapt to extreme climate-related conditions, such as the extensive rain, flooding, and extreme wind events which occurred last year and resulted in blocked roads and loss of electricity for quite a few folks for an extended period of time. As you know, over the last several years, Public Safety has created an emergency management plan and worked closely with Cumberland County on the larger regional plans, which included increasing training for staff and elected officials. However, this work is only at its beginning and could greatly benefit from our work under priority two, again, the education outreach and engagement programs. And as Rachel stated, there's a lot of synergy with priority two and all those other priorities. We will have... You will have seen the self-evaluation form required by the state, which is on packet page 24 that Rachel referred to, and you'll note that Assistant Chief Holmquist helped the committee with responding to the questions which were presented to create a baseline of where Gray is in the process. So, you'll see that we've started quite a few steps but haven't finished them, and other steps we haven't started at all, and some steps were a little further along on maybe closer to done. There are no right or wrong answers on that form. It's really a tool to help the town identify work that needs to be done to make the town more resilient. And as with our volunteers from the Lake Association in Cumberland County, Soil and Water, Public Safety is looking forward to having additional resources from this committee to help them with that work that they're already tasked with. And with that, I will hand it off to Jane to talk about our priority number four.
Jane, if you would just introduce yourself for the benefit of people at home.
Okay. I'm Jane Chandler, and I live at 395 Portland Road in Gray. And as it says, public transportation or public transit. I know Nate and some other people were working on transportation at some point, but didn't have time to finish it or what. Anyway, they... What we're thinking about after we get over the water and all of that stuff that seems to be most... Where we are most vulnerable is to start working on transportation, because Gray has a lot of roads and is far enough from places like Portland and what have you. But if you don't have a car, then there is really no transportation. There is a pretty robust transportation for medical issues if you need a doctor's appointment or to get to the hospital or something like that, and you're eligible through motive care for having some lower income, something like that, or even senior citizens. I'm not sure they have an income. Those are there, but that leaves you kind of up... You can't stop anywhere to pick up a... Well, you can pick up a prescription now, but you didn't be able to... A year or two ago, you could not even go get a prescription using those rides. So, we are going to be looking into transportation in Gray. And I think... Next. Thank you. Someday, I'll know this, how to do this.
Well, Kyle's the reason.
Kyle. Kyle, next! So, these are the categories it runs down to. RTP is one of the possibilities, and even could be with other plans, could be in collaboration with RTP. The Recreation Department and their van, I know I've read about it in the newspaper, and I know that they're working on it. GPCOG has tons of grants. They are always bumping out grants. And GPCOG is very... In fact, I wouldn't be here if I hadn't taken GPCOG classes. I mean, they're very involved in the community. Complete Streets, it's coming up, and I'm looking forward to, because it looks like it would be really nice if I can get to downtown. Is going to be working on the safety of the streets, the combination of people walking and people riding bicycles and what have you. And Kyle, what did you do? I still... Well, how do I tell him? He's going to figure it out. Here we go.
There you go.
Well, okay, yes, this is where I want to be, if it stops. So, public transportation is vital when it comes to climate change and resiliency, because if someone does not have a ride and there is any kind of event going on, they have no way to deal with it. They cannot... Somebody's got to go pick them up to evacuate them. There's no way to get to whatever they need. What we propose is to utilize the M-DASH, I'm sure you all know about that. What the M-DASH project did with data, leaves a lot of tools for us that we can tap into, and then there are other sources to get to, to get so that we understand more what this transportation comes down to. I drew a blank. So, we will be working on the transportation issue when we're done with, or maybe just some of us will be working on transportation while others do other things. And the most immediate one for me, anyway, is going to be a survey for the community, especially for the target community, that being people who don't have a car or who have a car and, for whatever reason, they can't drive. And that will be to determine just what it is they need transportation for, just what the breadth of the problem is. And then, but also, I've started on, it's not finished yet, a Facebook ride board. And I can't tell you exactly what that's going to be, but it's going to be a... It's Gray-specific, because it's difficult to deal with the whole safety issue for people, but hopefully that will help.
Is... Sorry, Jane, to interrupt. Is that where someone could post that they need a ride locally, and someone might offer that ride for them? Is that...
Yeah. The people... It will be... I'm sure you've seen those Facebook pages where you can't post... Some of them you can't even look, actually. You can't use that Facebook page unless you have answered all these questions and become a member. So, it'll be something like that to make sure that people live in Gray. And really, that's the only thing I can think of that we need. Well, there's questions we could come up with, anyway. But it's a start, because there had... Nothing has taken off yet, and still, people need rides. And then, as that... At the same time, then work on different scenarios for what is available for grants. I've been chipping at the bit to write grants for some programs for sustainability or sustainable transportation. I know there's one... They started out as a private nonprofit, and they ended up being a federal department. And I get emails from them daily telling me about a new grant they have. And that's all about electric cars and that kind of thing. And there's even some grants on there that Gray might want to use for their cars that they're getting, and your meters you're going to be putting out to refill. So, I think that's about it. I think I probably talked more than I needed to.
No. Thank you, Jane.
All right, on to our next slide. So, my name is Chelsea Roy, and I recently moved to 84 Lewiston Road in Gray, and I'm loving it. And I'm here to talk about our final solution, which is, with the verbiage that we have, conduct a baseline for energy usage. And when we started kind of drilling down into it, we decided that specifically, we would want to focus on creating a compost program, which this interlaces with our priority number two, which is education and outreach. And this would be in order to engage and reduce wet waste from the transfer station. So, as I've been informed, some of the concerns that we're having within our transfer station is the increasing cost, and this is due to tipping fees, which is based off of the tons that are produced, which wet waste, as you know, food often is heavier. So, if we were able to mitigate that from the streamline, we would be able to reduce the tipping fees, which would overall, I believe, make our community members happier as they have to spend less money. So, we are reducing the initial cost as well as reducing our methane emissions from inputting more wet waste into landfills. So, if we go to our next slide, these are some of the action priorities that would result from it, as I mentioned. We would reduce the tipping fee. This would also include municipal solar ray generation, which is monitored by the revision. The department heads would finance and direct the track of energy usage and costs via budget processes, which is how we'd be able to categorize our compost and the new database that we would set up to implement, keeping kind of track records of how this is financially benefiting Gray as well. And Mo Russo working in the transition of energy, transportation of energy to create efficient approaches. As some... When I first heard this topic, I was really excited to get this on our list. I am someone who ended up working with the Farmington Compost Cooperative, and we're seeing more and more places in Maine who are starting to dip their toes in compost, which definitely sounds a little gross, but bear with me. Compost is a really great way to introduce sustainable habits into community members' lives, as it's something that you utilize every single day, and you're mitigating the food waste into a different stream. So, this could be a really good way to start in introducing sustainable practices into community members' daily lives, which is, I believe, one of the reasons why we wanted to introduce this topic. And it can be something that is paired really well with the recent recycling initiative that was brought to the transfer station. So, we believe that this could be a more smooth transition as we introduce a new wave of recycling into the town. And on to our next slide. Making sure that we get on to our next steps. We originally are here, so we're able to review the Community Resilience Partnership and the resolutions, as well as gaining council feedback. So, we would like to hear your feedback on our top five priorities, as well as any additional questions that you may have in the pretty bulky packets that we handed out tonight, which include our action spreadsheets and our self-evaluation documents. And I would like to go on to the next slide. And our next steps for the committee after tonight, we are hoping to share an updated presentation to the public, so they're able to keep track of what we are moving forward with. We also are hoping to request a council vote on the finalized municipal... We also are hoping to request a council vote on the finalized municipal resolutions on February twentieth for this council meeting to allow submission to our Climate Resilient Partnerships. So we're able to move forward with the grant application process. We also are hoping to develop an action plan, timeline and scope for priorities one and two, and create possible grant applications. Lastly, we hope to meet with the council March fifth for our additional workshop to discuss possible grant applications. So on to our next slide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was, that was really great to have that update and I was pleased to see how much work had been done. I know that everyone's been working hard really for the last two years, but it's nice to have it all documented and written down, so that's helpful. So you're looking for feedback on which priorities to focus on? I know you identified the top five.
Yeah, so I think we're looking for confirmation that you're in agreement that those are priorities for the town of Gray. And get us, give us any feedback or questions or thoughts on those five and we'll do our best to answer them.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go back, the, just for people watching, the priorities were on packet page five that were just outlined. Number one was watershed planning. Two is climate change, education and outreach, which actually is kind of goes across several of these priorities. Number three was updating our emergency management plan and mitigation, hazard mitigation plans. Four was increasing potential public transit ridership opportunities or alternative transportation for Gray residents. And five was to conduct a baseline for, a baseline for energy use, particularly through composting at the transfer station. Anyone wanna start with feedback or thoughts? I, I, I'll go. So I, I definitely thought number one was very well aligned with our, some of the work the council's identified recently. I know you mentioned the Lakes Association has come to us several times, interested in some watershed quality work, particularly around phosphorus and the council was interested in pursuing that. We were, I know you mentioned you had reached out to some partners around that work. The council had tossed around also reaching out to GP Cog, but it sounds like maybe you have some other organizations interested in partnering with that work. You know, others had thoughts around that? Yeah, go ahead Dan.
Yep, first thanks very much. I think you folks have some access to some resources other committees would be jealous of. But the information's really valuable to have. I think generally speaking with the priorities you have, I, I would agree with those. I think my initial thought is that it's over enthusiastic. Which isn't necessarily a bad thing, except for the fact that it can, you can take a hit as far as how effective you are. I think the education piece, certainly the education with MSED fifteen, I mean, obviously that makes sense. That's where the schools are, we have Russell here too, but I think there may also be an opportunity with the rec department, which sees a lot of kids through kids club. And I almost personally would prefer the emphasis to be that way. Just because I think that there's, there is an alignment there. You know, your number five for me is, is a little higher up the ladder because I think the composting piece has a real opportunity to have some very concrete impact on the budget, which is a good thing. So I, the other piece is transportation, I think is gonna be a little tricky because there's a lot of organizations with a lot of irons in the fire. So I think coordinating that with other people and other organizations would be really important. So that you're not either reinventing the wheel or maybe even perhaps not involved in the most effective solution. I mean, just today I learned, you know, talking with Mike, that MDOT has a project to connect Lewiston and Portland. So, you know, obviously we're in the, in the middle there, so you know.
That's a highway line.
Well, it, but there may be opportunity to, to influence that. And I guess those are the kinds of things I think that we want to just, you know, use whatever resources we have as effectively as possible. The other piece, I guess I have a little question about is the is the priority access to staff? There's a lot of people that want a piece of staff. So I think coordinating that and setting those priorities, I mean, obviously is, you know, Mike is gonna be the gatekeeper for those kinds of things. But you know, the solar array obviously is something that we're gonna have to think about. Because in a few more years, the council will be, you know, at a point where it'll not be forced to make a decision, but have an opportunity to make a decision as to whether the town is gonna require that or just continue the lease agreement that we have now. So understanding how effective that's been at providing electricity for municipal services would be valuable for the town. But I think the lakes is definitely, you know, for me, it's like number one, two and three. So, you know, those are, those are my thoughts and.
Well, and I just wanted to share, Dan, that we had the exact same thought. Like these are, you know, identifying the top three to five and then you look at the scope of work.
Yeah.
There's so much good that can be done there, but it's all gonna take a lot of time.
Yeah.
And so I think that we, for example, with the compost program, that takes a lot of lead time to get an actual community project up and running. But we could start with the education piece to get the information out. So that is definitely one of our concerns as well. And then the impact on staff. And I think the watershed moved up the list because we have, as you mentioned, this great pocket of resources at our disposal to help us with that work and hopefully we won't be bugging staff. But you're right, everything would flow through Mike if we needed any assistance with staff or our liaison to make sure that we're not creating work or jumping the line, so.
Well, and even just coordinating all that, I mean, the work that the, that you know, was done with St. Joseph's on water quality and, and we've done work with, you know, soil and water conservation. So obviously you've made contact with them, that's good. But I think that we need to sort of take all these disparate pieces and find a way to focus on a little bit more.
Yeah. And the grants, and Rachel can certainly answer more questions about the grants, but they are twice a year. And we're anxious to go after the March grant because the March grant is restricted to towns that have not received funding yet. In December they'll have another round, but that will be again reopened to everyone. And so that's a, a good opportunity for Gray. But we also understand, and that's why we're having that workshop, that we need to drill down on watershed and come up with a scope and timeline that's realistic.
Yeah.
And then, you know, try to put together an application where we can get funding so that we're not impacting staff with the work.
I think my last sort of observation or comment revolves around the the resolution that you're looking for. Whereas, I think there's too many wherashes. I mean, I really.
Yeah, well, so.
Quite a bit.
So the first, if you look at that and I left it, we left it in the exact form that we received from the state. So the first.
So I'm packet page twenty-two for us.
Thank you.
Thanks Dan.
The required statements are required.
Yeah.
And then we simply added our priorities to the first one. The following ones are optional and so that's kind of what we're looking for is for some feedback from you guys if you'd like. We did actually remove one already ourselves, but better to leave the rest in there to get feedback from you on, on those.
I just think in the end, especially from the standpoint of communicating it to people, you know, short and sweet is gonna be a much easier message to deliver than a dozen wherashes.
Yeah. Before we move on, I just, I wanna recognize that Mike Foley has joined us, our new town manager. We'll certainly introduce you more formally at our following meeting, but I just wanna welcome you to this one.
Thank you. I have some thoughts on this if I may have.
Yeah, let's just, let's just hear from, if anyone other counselors have and then I'll go back to you.
Sure.
Yeah. Matthew or Marty, did you have any thoughts?
Oh yeah, I have a, on the, you mentioned wet food waste or something like that. You'll always have peels and rinds and wet paper towels and stuff like that and that's weight. Just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah, you just step up to the podium.
If I could speak to that just for a second. So I learned about this issue when I was the chair of the Recycling Committee. And Randy Cookson is such a great data gatherer about his operation. He found out that if we could reduce wet waste by ten percent, so all the wet paper towels can stay, just a little bit of compost comes out, it was twelve million dollars for the taxpayer.
In one year?
Yeah.
No, that's too much.
I don't think so.
The municipal budget's not even.
It was a big number and it was, it was a big number. I'm not.
It must've been over time perhaps because.
I'm sure it was over.
Yeah.
Well.
But we, we're, we're all certain that there's value and money to be saved there for sure.
Right, I mean tipping fees are going up again this year. So they've been going up every year since I've been on council and I'm sure they were going up before that, so.
What, how much do we spend in tipping fees?
I don't know off the top of my head, but hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars, not, not millions.
Not millions.
That's a lot of dough.
Money I'd like to have in the bank.
Well, that's humiliating, I'm just a guy.
No, no, that's all right. No, it's certain. Certainly impactful.
I, I'd just like to add, when you're talking about, you know, it's, it's, it's great to save the money on the tipping fee and, and that's a laudable goal, but if you're gonna compost that material, you're also getting a beneficial product out of it. So it's, it's not, you know, I mean, yes, reducing tipping fees is important. But I, I like the idea of reducing tipping fees and having a, you know, hopefully a useful product that, that can recycle those nutrients in a useful way.
Right, and Randy says, and he does a lot of composting now with a brush and things. And he says it's one of the most popular things at the transfer station. He, he always, he doesn't sell it, but he always runs out of it every year. And if we could create more of that, I'm sure there's a need. Anne, did you?
Well, I mean, as the council liaison to this committee, all I can say is it's been a great honor to work with this talented and passionate bunch of people. I mean, they did a great job putting this, this presentation together with no help from me really. So I, 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 I think the goals that you've identified are, are very appropriate for all the reasons that you mentioned, including their relationship to town, existing town plans and, and priorities and you know, it is, it's always hard, you know, the, to have, it's, it's great to do that blue sky thinking. It is, does get harder to, to sort of bring things down to ground level and get things actionable. But the, the water quality stuff is so important from some, from a wide variety of, of perspectives. I, I mean, the, we, my family has a camp over in Panther Pond, which is in Raymond, not that far away. And I've certainly in my lifetime seen the water quality degrade and, and, you know, things, you, water is much less clear at, at some depths than it used to be, just as an example. And so I, that has a huge impact on our tax base. I mean, I, I mean, just quite apart from the, you know, the aquatic life that lives in the lakes or depends on it. If, if, if the lakes get destroyed, the value of the property that abuts the lakes or is on the lakes is, is gonna be diminished. And, and that's, that's a huge problem for the taxpayers in Gray. So it's, I mean, for just all, I mean, that's kind of a selfish money reason and, and there's so many other reasons to be concerned about it. But the, the lake associations have been flagging this for us for years and, and it's, it's just time to act on it. And so I was, when we met with the lake associations, there, there are some great models that seem, you know, obviously, yes, they will take work, but very doable in terms of, you know, changing our ordinances to, to restrict phosphorus infiltration into the lakes and, and, and watersheds. And I, you know, I just think that's absolutely a direction we need to go right away.
Yeah, great. Thanks Anne. Mike, you said you had some thoughts on this?
Yeah, no, I thank you for the warm welcome and looking forward to working with this committee in, in my time here. I was listening in on my return. I'm, I'm still doing double duty for just a handful more days. But very excited to, to hear about the work that you guys have been doing. I'll just quickly mention a few points on each of the ones you have. The watershed plan, I know the Portland Water District has a grant program that they offer for property owners around Sabago Lake. So hopefully maybe we can take a look at that and see what that model looks like and either apply for a grant or, or budget some funds to potentially help with some of those lakeside properties. So we'll, we'll look forward to learning more about that. And then as far as the public transit is concerned, I'm currently the, the board president of the Greater Portland Transit District in Metro and have served that board for nearly two decades. So I'm very supportive and, and excited to expand potentially public transit. And so as I told Dan today, I, I, I learned of DOT, main DOT's work plan that involves a route between Lewiston and Lewiston Auburn and Portland that they wanna actually start that route this summer. And so it's on their radar that we're interested in potentially having a stop as part of that in, in the future. They wanna, they wanna get it up and running. But as part of that, one of the things that we're launching in Met, at Metro as a, a new program this year with the town of Falmouth, who's a, a member community, is what's called microtransit. And microtransit is a program that's kind of like the public sector Uber. And so there's an app associated with that program. So that is something that we wanted to explore in the city of Westbrook where I was previously. And that might be something to explore here as well. And that microtransit would connect into another route, a major route. So that microtransit could be accessible and much more affordable than a fixed route transit system. And that would allow folks to be able to request a ride and then be able to get connected to either this, the, the Lewiston to Portland one, if it, if it were to stop at, at the, at the park and ride. Or to connect into the routes in Falmouth or Yarmouth. And then people could take it the remainder of the way into the Greater Portland area. Or we used to call the Greater Westbrook area. And so that's an opportunity that I haven't, I haven't figured out my transition from that board yet at the moment. But maybe, it may be opportune for me to remain participating in that for the time being as, as we explore these options. So I can be best understanding of how that gets unveiled. And then lastly, with the compost program, you know, that's something that all municipalities are exploring. The, the, the budget that we're working on for this year, tipping fees is the largest increase of pretty much all the budgets. And it's something we've all experienced in municipalities for the last decade or more. And it's a total of four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So I'm guessing he was probably talking about maybe twelve to thousand dollars in savings potentially, if, if twelve was the number. But composting, especially with food waste, comes with a, a higher level of management. So Randy can do the composting with brush and, and things of that nature. But once you introduce food waste and other things, there's, the DEP has a whole different level of standards associated with that. So thankfully in, in the Greater Portland area, there's collection companies like Garbage to Garden. And they, that comes with a cost. But we just partnered with Garbage to Garden in Westbrook to have some drop-off locations, temporary drop, or startup drop-off locations in the community. So we could, that's something we could explore. It comes with a cost, but the net, there might be a net savings. I don't think the, the monthly cost is significant. And so we could have a few bins at a facility here like Town Hall or at the Public Safety Building and Public Works, where people could collect compost and drop that off. And, and then Garbage to Garden will report to us the data of how much tonnage was removed from the waste stream. And that's something that we could explore. So I think a few of these things might take more time than others. I think the composting one can actually happen a lot faster in that sense. And there could be drop-off at the, the transfer station too and see how much Randy knows about, you know, the composting, if he's equipped to, to potentially do the DEP permitting for that, probably not from the, those sounds of the, so I think I can help you guys advance some of these initiatives sooner rather than later and looking forward to working with everyone.
Thanks Mike, that's helpful.
I, on, on composting, you know, having a municipal program is, is one approach, but other towns also encourage backyard composting you know, on an individual basis where you're not, you know, creating a DEP regulated facility or whatever. So I think that's, that ought to be part of the mix also for getting food waste out of the waste stream.
Yeah, that's a good point. I know New Gloucester had a program where they had a discounted rate on home composting systems and New York Yarmouth did for a time. And North Yarmouth did for a time, also.
So compost is my passion project, and I am so, I'm not gonna go down a tangent, but I do want, I do want, I just wanna, okay. I do wanna just get to the resolution, but I also wanna share that we could rush compost, or we could, we could use the best science of the day, which is looking at the biological mix within the soil and digesting it aerobically instead of anaerobically. And that is easier to do with a bulk amount and a third party that is expert in that. And I know Garbage to Garden is on the edge of that. They're not there yet. None of the bulk compost picker- upper's are doing that yet. It's a niche that could be filled. But I think there's a great deal of opportunity for the kids, because when it comes to climate change, it's fungi or fire. And the kids get that. So if we can take compost really seriously and deep dive into it, give it a little bit more time in the planning process, I think it might yield just tremendous leadership results for the whole town. And that's enough on that topic. I held it back. I got certified in Elaine Ingham's Soil Food Web during the pandemic, so that's why I'm a geek about.
There's a lot of science in composting, more than people realize. Yeah, so I, I don't, I wanna devote a little time to the resolution. I know that you're gonna come back to us with that. I also wanna acknowledge your timeline. So I know you wanna come back on the 20th to update us on, on your grant presentation priority.
On the 20th will be the vote on the resolution. So we're hoping that'll be on as an action item.
Okay.
We are more than willing to come back on the 20th and do the presentation again for the public record in an official meeting, if you feel it's valuable and you want us to. We are available to do that.
Okay, I'll have to look at what we have, yeah, what other priorities we have floating around.
Budget season. This time of year. But the priority is really just to make sure the resolution's on as an action item. We need to submit our paperwork for the resiliency, the Climate Resiliency Partnership and get approved first before we can submit a grant. And the grant deadline is March 29th. So that would be the 20th. On the 5th, we'd be looking, or thereabouts, for some time, again, in a workshop, so that we could present that more robust plan for the watershed work and the, the grant application that we've pulled together.
So the plan, from your committee's perspective, is to apply first for watershed work?
Yes, something related, and on, we're gonna have a lot, and the education piece. You can have more than one in your grant.
Okay.
So we'll probably have both.
So just to, I don't, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at our schedule, but probably not. But we bumped, we had to bump meetings. Our typical meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month. But March, we had to bump out a week for each of those because of the primary election on the 5th. So our first meeting in March is on the 12th. So we could potentially look at a meeting the week of the 4th, but it would be a separate workshop from our typical meetings.
And if anyone's free on the 12th, we need election workers, so.
You know, on the 5th, you mean?
I mean, the 5th, yeah. Anyone's free on the 5th, we need election workers.
Yeah, so we can, we can communicate that, about that over email, though, about schedule.
Yeah, we can, and that probably would still work, as long as the 12th is available to us. And we know that you guys like to approve grant applications. So we just wanted to make sure there was enough time for a subsequent meeting, once we got your feedback, for us to present any updated documentation to you.
Okay. So it looks like if we, if we just quickly jump, and I know we're running a little short on time, because we have a hard stop at 6 o'clock for budget input. But on packet page 22 is the beginning of the resolution. And I know you mentioned, and you, you've outlined here, that there are some required statements, which seemingly we wouldn't change. I know, Dan, you had some thoughts on what might, that it was a little long. Did you have ones in particular that you had seen that you thought were extraneous, or?
Well, to be honest with you, I was gonna suggest stopping with the mandatory ones.
Oh, okay.
Because I, I think that that, I mean, it, it isn't, it isn't very specific, but it is the umbrella of everything you've spoken to tonight. And I don't feel like this resolution has to be an action plan. It's kind of the way I'm thinking of this document, so that was my first thought.
Okay. I would like to focus these on the things where, that we've identified in the plan. So that, you know, the ones that are really relevant to the top five.
Relevant to the three to five, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I admittedly haven't had a chance to read through this word for word, but I will take a closer look at it. But just looking at it, the first three in particular seem relevant to me. And also the fifth one, about shifting seasonal temperatures. No? You don't like that one?
Well, I mean, I appreciate your input. We could, you know, potentially, I think the committee could stew over this a little bit more.
I think that makes, right, you're coming back to us, and I think that does make sense.
Yeah, Rachel just wanted to clarify that this is really, this resolution will be more used as an educational piece to climate action planning. And I think when I, when we looked at this, we also tried to identify things that were happening in Gray. So like, number four is transitioning municipal fleet vehicles. We're actually doing that. So that's the other component to keep in mind.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Would it be more beneficial for each of you to send us individual feedback? Or to send it to Anne, and then we could tackle as Anne said on the 12th?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I just wanna make sure that we have enough time to get it to you for your packet. So the 20th, the packet would be due the 15th, so that would work. Yes, yeah. We know we need, we have to count to three. We would love it to be unanimous, because I think it puts a lot of weight behind the work that we're doing. And so that's what we're aiming for. But yeah, if everybody could potentially get back to Anne between now and maybe Friday, so that she has the information for our workshop on the 12th, then we can hammer out a, a shorter version and submit it in time for your packet, and then we'll be available on the 20th to go into more discussion about the resolution.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good outline of a plan. I just had one clarifying question about the process. In the last council session, I was serving as liaison to this committee, and I just, I thought I recalled needing a localized climate action plan to participate. Is that, is that, am I remembering, I might be remembering that wrong.
You have to stand.
It's one of the, oh, it's one of the projects, okay, is that what it was?
You can create one.
Right, I know we need the resolution, and then you have some project opportunities.
Self-evaluation, resolution.
Self-evaluation.
The public outreach component, which is already done. And then our action list, the top three to five.
Okay, but we don't need to, to detail a specific action, okay. Yeah, that's, that's good to hear, because I think we have some projects ready to go that would be super relevant to this program, so I, I think that.
Well, and I think we also, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that education outreach will be building, and the emergency management plan and the watershed plan, that will help us set that base for a climate action plan. I mean, it's all gonna be parts of it, eventually.
Right, yeah, they will certainly all have inputs, and all the projects we're doing will have inputs into that larger goal. So if that makes sense. Any final thoughts?
I, I have not heard about this Portland to Lewiston transportation project, whatever. I, I don't understand fully what it is. I'd love to get briefed on that at an appropriate time, I guess.
Sure, yeah, just, I'm, just quickly, I think the MDOT has decided to create a bus route between Lewiston Auburn and Portland as a commuter, mostly.
And it's a trial.
It's a trial, yeah.
It's not a permanent route.
Right, so they, I think they were hoping to implement it starting in June. And the original idea is only have stops in Lewiston Auburn and Portland, but I think that it's been tossed around from some providers, that they might stop in Gray on the way.
So it's sort of analogous to the Zoom bus from Bedford to Portland?
Probably, yeah, I'm not as familiar with that, but.
And they might get it up and running for this year, and if they continue it, then we could be considered for future phases of that project. If the timing works out and the interest is there, so we'd need to work with the committee to gather the interest from folks in the community. So we could be like, hey, you know, we've got, you know, 50 people that we think would use this on a weekly basis.
Yeah, I, to, yeah. To Jane's point earlier, that survey is really, we felt, and it was Jane's suggestion, we've collected a lot of data about vulnerable population in the town, and we know that there's a population that needs additional transportation, but we don't know why. And so the survey that Jane suggested we make is to ask people, if you had public transportation, where would you go? Like, what, where do you actually need to go? And I think that that, if we do that survey, Mike, then we would be able to have that information, because they'd be like, I need to get to Portland to go to the doctors, or, or.
Yeah, that, I think that would be very valuable.
And that's something we can do, you know, ourselves without spending any money, you know, if we, if we can do some outreach, maybe a small stipend from our committee budget.
Well, I wanna thank you all for coming in and taking the time to prepare all this material. I think it was really helpful and is certainly keeping us on track for joining this partnership, which I know is the goal we had outlined two years ago, so that's wonderful. We're just gonna take a five-minute break before we transition to budget input. So we will resume at 6:06 PM. Okay, welcome back, everyone, after a quick break. So up next in the agenda is some input from the public on the upcoming FY '25 budget for the town. This is fairly informal. This, we have never done this before at the beginning of the budget process. And we had some feedback after last year's process that residents were eager for more opportunities for input. So the town has really only begun crafting budgets for, for departments next, for the next fiscal year. And we're just wanna use this as an opportunity to get some really, just feedback from residents about what they would like to see in the budget, what they don't wanna see, what they feel is a priority for the town. And then we will hope to incorporate and feedback as it's needed or relevant as we begin crafting the budget. So I know there's some members of the community in the audience, and anyone on the, online is welcome to raise their hand for an opportunity to speak also. I just ask that you come up to the podium, introduce yourself, state your residence, and then try to limit your comments to about three minutes, because we only have about an hour here before we begin our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. So just welcome whoever'd like to come up first, if anyone would like to come up.
My name is Lacey Antson. I live at 45 Lake Avenue, and I've lived here since 2015. I'm highly aware of the transformation that hopefully will take place almost later than sooner for Route 115, Main Street, and the intersections central to town. Because they're gonna be taking several years to complete, I'm hoping the town would see the value in perhaps this coming budget to purchase things that our neighboring towns have that could be very beneficial to save lives. I guess they're called radar feedback solar-powered LED speed limit signs. And online tonight, I found you can purchase them for $3,500, give or take. I was happy to hear that they're only $3,500, and not like $10,000, but they do cost some money. But I think if we know, and we do know that improving the roads will take several years to get the funding and actually, I think this could save lives as well as frustration of people who see that people are speeding 20 miles over the speed limit every day. I don't know the cost of hiring a sheriff or police officer to actually give out tickets, because even if you have these flashing signs that tell someone you're going 15 miles over, they're like, well, there's no cops, so, you know, I'll just make the sign keep flashing with a smiley face or a frown face. So I don't know if there's money in the budget to also hire. to also hire part-time, um, police officers, sheriffs, to actually give out tickets to put a weight behind these signs. Um, our neighboring towns have them, and I hope that people do respect other towns. I'd liken to people who drive through our towns to respect our speed limit, which is basically thirty, but they're going fifty or more. I've heard it over and over again. Um, the other thing is, because it'll affect the budget in a big way for the, um, the taxpayers, how and when is the Gray Town Council being made aware of the school board expenditures? Um, and it sounds like they're working on a school bond referendum for some improvements, like, is the town council aware of that and knowing that that's gonna be eighty percent of our bill and last year, all the huffa blue that it caused for the June election and approving of the budget? That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I just wanna note, um, we're gonna listen to everyone's comments, and then we'll, um, have feedback at the end. Would anyone else like to come up?
Hi, uh, my name is Joseph Alvadi. I live at Three-Fifty Portland Road here in Gray. Um, since moving into my home about two years ago, um, we've had issues with our well. Um, I have spoken to Mr. McGuire about this, um, just on the side, one day at the transfer station, about my, my, my plate. Um, definitely things ge- I think geologically have changed here in, in South Gray. Um, I'm not the only person in my neighborhood with well problems, um, and it's not just the inadequacy of the well. Um, we have, you know, different people come out and say, "Oh, you can frac it, but that's not gonna guarantee that you're getting any water." But it's also the quality of the water, which is very, very high in radon and arsenic and uranium. And I'm wondering, um, we, we just fall into the, about a mile and a half from where the current, um, last hydrant is. Um, and then I, when I had spoken to Mr. McGuire about it last summer, um, he said that there was a possibility that Gray would be looking into partner with the Portland Water District and hopefully get us some relief. And the reason that I say this is kinda sad. Um, last February, my next-door neighbor died of bone cancer. Um, it, it is a serious health hazard. The uranium levels in the water that we have are high enough that even doing dishes, um, is a health risk. Taking a shower is a health risk.
Sixty-two thousand units of uranium.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just repeat what he said, 'cause.
Sixty-two thousand units of uranium per whatever.
Was acceptable to sixty.
Yeah, it's, it's astronomical.
Not sixty thousand.
But it's, it, you know, it's, it's a public health issue, um, for a lot of people. Um, but again, it's also just having clean water, which I think is a basic human right, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't aware that that was an issue for people. Thank you.
Sorry, I spoke out of turn. I'd like to just add to that point.
Oh, sorry, if you could just state your name and.
Oh, Ron Van Corr, on the Three-Fifty Portland Road.
Thank you.
My neighbor crossed the street when I purchased the house. To- I told him of the water test. Sixty-two thousand units of uranium, when in fact, only six, zero, period.
Period.
Not sixty thousand are acceptable. So, it's ten thousand over acceptability. Uranium is, uh, I'm not a chemist or an engineer, but it's related to the amount of radon that's in the water that fills the house's air from the toilet water and from using the sink. So, you, you just use bottled water. Um, the people who lived in my, my house before drank and used that bottled water the whole time, and they were shocked when we did that. You know, buying a house have a water test. The neck across the street neighbor heard about the water test. He had his done, and he put in over fifteen thousand dollars of abatement equipment. And the problem with uranium, uh, abatement is you're collecting uranium in one spot. What do you do with it? That's a real problem. I don't want that in my house. I don't wanna handle it. So, um, the next-door neighbor, Ed, I can't remember his last name, uh, the number-one way uranium, high levels of uranium water will manifest in the human body is bone cancer. So, is it a, is it a fluke? And he's lived there for twenty-five years, and he passed away. So, um, my understanding, too, is water tests that have been done for thirty years, they never used to check for uranium. Technology's changed, and now they're finding out uranium is rampant. I mean, that's a crazy ratio of what's acceptable. And, um, uh, with across the street and my poor neighbor, I would s- s- submit that it's probably high in most houses, and how many people have lived there twenty and thirty years and never had their water tested. And they're at risk for this. It's a very serious issue. People have died and will die. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment in the audience?
Yes, I do. I really wanna follow that. That's very sad. Um, my name is Pam Edson. I live at Yarmouth Road in Gray. And I just wanna say, "Welcome, Mr. Foley. I expect it and happy to have you here." And I, um, my comments tonight are about last year's budget and how I hope to see things go forward with this year's. As you guys all know, 'cause you were all here, um, uh, you know, there was a lot of confusion about what our budget actually was and what it ended up being. And you, and ultimately, it ended up being that the people weren't really that confused and the council was. Um, and the whole thing, just to be honest, right through to the September meeting was, and you guys were all at the September meeting, I, and I know, I sat, and I, we, I was able to get bird's-eye view, but I know there was a frustration for everybody, the whole process. And I'm just really hoping that this year, that we're gonna have transparency right out of the gate, and that, you know, with the, um, knowing what our tax rate is gonna be, the mill rate, you know, I just think that's something we could have right out at the beginning, you know, instead of having to wonder, "Is it fifteen point eight-two? Is it twelve point seven-five?" I would really like to know the mill rate. And I mean, I know last year that the tax assessor was actually told not to be given out that information, and I think that she should be able to, if we come in and talk to her about how the, the budget's gonna impact our tax bill, she should be able to relay that information to us if we're asking. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask about, I was noticing on the MMA website that we have a clerk position. I remember last year when we were talking about the budget, um, you guys probably remember you were gonna add another clerk to the clerk's office, and it was gonna be part-time. My understanding was that it was gonna be part-time for the clerk's office and also part-time for the finance department. Do you guys remember it that way?
Yep. We can talk more about it at the end, but it was, it was a full-time position that had shared duties across.
Okay, yeah, exactly what I, what I thought. And I was curious to, 'cause I'm hearing rumblings that we might be getting a wanting to put in a finance person for the finance department this year. And I was just curious how that, what, that was how we, I thought it was put into the budget for our vote, what it was going to be. And I'm all for that the finance girl is a finance department of one and that she definitely needs help. I'm just curious how we had, if, I, I don't think we need four clerks. That's my personal opinion. I do have a little bit of experience since I worked there ten years myself. And I certainly thought that that was a fair, a fair, um, way to cover this, is, is trying this first, you know, and giving some hours to the clerk's office and to the finance department. Um, so that was just one of the questions that I'm gonna have coming up. I guess that is, oh, I do have one more question, sorry. The audit. Okay. Last year, half the problems that we had were because we had something happen that I don't know if the auditors found it, if the finance director found it, but we ended up being like, uh, the one point five million short or something like that. And I just want to know, we, where are we with our audit for fiscal year twenty-three, because we are now eight months into twenty-four? Does anybody have any kind of answer?
When it comes time, we will.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about.
It's not time?
No, I would just would like to hear everyone's comments, and we'll go back and revisit them, if that's.
All right, so that's, that's a concern for my, of mine, knowing what we've just went through. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? No? Okay. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Um, I'm one of the founders of a nonprofit organization just recently, The Perfect Fit Group Homes, which is targeting, um, on-the-spectrum ASD artistic young adults that are of age, adults, that will always require a guardianship. That's why they call it a spectrum. Some people on the spectrum, it's usually a host of different diagnoses. Some people on the spectrum at lower functioning are diapid and non-verbal, and they can be thirty, forty, and fifty years old. And then some people make, are able to make decision-making processes at six years old and are stuck there, some at twelve. If they can make adult decisions for their own life that are reasonable at sixteen years old or eighteen-year-old level, then they can be real independent. But the ones at twelve and, and six years old and act in those age range, there's not, really no good place for them to go. So, um, myself and my partner have paid for legal research, and the legal research comes up ADA. When George Bush Senior signed into law the ADA and compliance, we saw all the mobility ramps, bathrooms, kitchens, et cetera, so forth, required to be, to make those accommodations in public buildings, including Section Eight housing. There are only four types of, of disabilities. The mobility, of which I just spoke of. Deaf people, ADA requires public accommodation for deaf people, so they will have blinking, probably in this building, blinking fire alarms, and any other accommodation necessary. I'm not an expert, maybe there's others, but you probably have blinking fire alarms here. As well as blind people, braille signs everywhere in public buildings, elevators that speak. ADA is required to cover all four, I've only mentioned three disabilities. The fourth one is mental disabilities. And the reason ADA never did that is, the history is, thirty years ago, people on the spectrum like this that require guardianship were in institutions, and they were thrown into the same bucket as schizophrenia, dual personalities, um, and worse. That's horrifying. My stepson and my nephew are nice young men. Who would want them to live that way? So, we did away with that. Now, they've been taken out of that, but there's never been a really good fix. So, I'm, I'm here just to educate you. I don't know if this would ever fit in the budget. I don't know what this town has for Section Eight housing, but the law requires that you do a certain percentage for, in your building, and I probably in Gray, it's not gonna happen, but if you're building a thirty-building, unit building for, um, um, Section Eight housing, so many percentage is required to be, um, a mobility compliant, et cetera, that it has to be noticed that so many rooms have to be for people that will require guardianship. And it would require knocking a couple walls down instead of five one-bedroom unit, I'm almost done, instead of five one-bedroom units, knock a few walls down, you have one kitchen, one living room, maybe a den, and have four or five people live in that one unit, so now they can be supervised. Did you take your medicines today? Did you get your medicines? Did you have your dinner? Are you eating right? Are you sleeping right? They require what twelve-year-olds require or six-year-olds. And they are legally disabled now. They get a check every month. They're adults. So, all the laws are in place. The enforcement's been missing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? No? Okay. Uh, it looks like we have at least one person online. Um, just an opportunity for anyone online to raise their hand and comment. Last call. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out. Um, it's, it's good to have some feedback, certainly. Um, I know this is a very large crowd, but I'm happy to have you all here for your input. Um, I just wanna, you know, address some of, uh, the things that were mentioned, and if other counselors have things to say, just flag me, and I'll certainly let you speak. Um, so, Lacey, you were talking about, um, some radar signs. Um, we could certainly look into that. We do have, um, the town, in, in regards to the sheriff, we do have an agreement with Cumberland County Sheriff. Um, I believe it was Wednesday through Saturday, they are full-time here in Gray. Um, and then during the summer, we also have the school resource officer on patrol. So, we could certainly speak with them about, um, how they're patrolling and where they're sitting for, um, potentially people that are speeding, particularly through the village. Go ahead, Dan.
There are between the top of Yarmouth Road, the bridge on Shaker Road that goes across the turnpike, um, Main Street out to Wayne Ave and down to the plaza, over one hundred signs that direct traffic. Um, more signs, I don't believe, are the answer. I think there are things that we can do with the current signs. For instance, when we created, when we wait-listed Short Shaker Road, we had a discussion, um, with Cumberland County Sheriff's Department and created a handout, basically, that they would give to truck drivers, not local people. That's still occasionally, you see, use Short Shaker Road, as we refer to it, for, um, 'cause I'm sure that's the way their GPS is sending them. In order for us to ticket people, we're going to need to create an ordinance. We're going to need to create a ticket. Um, we, um, the, the sheriff has some of these things in place, but we don't have some of these things in place.
Just a point of information, Dan. You're talking about specifically related to the wait ordinance, not for speed, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And I think we have asked the sheriff's department, and I have seen them out in the ballot, parked in different places to try and catch people. Um, one of the things we talked, I talked to Tim about is, there are ways that we can call attention to the signs that we have without buying specifically special, um, speeding signs that are also more portable, so they could be, they could be moved, and they could be applied to different signs, which I think in Longland would be more effective than just putting up more fixed spot signs. We do have the speed trailer. Um, we've gotten better about moving that around from place to place. I think we can probably do even a better job on that one. And just a correction on the school cost thing, it's, it's not an eighty-twenty split anymore. It used to be closer to that, but this last budget, it was closer to a sixty-fourty split, so, um, just, just to put that out there.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, speaking to the signage issue. I mean, I, I, um, I'm inclined to agree with you, Lacey. I know that Dan and I have a longstanding disagreement about the effectiveness of those flashing signs. He disregards them. I obey them.
That's not true. I always get a thank you when I go by any of those signs.
Um, I, I, um, I do like those. I, I, you know, you see them like in North Yarmouth, uh, in places like that. I mean, uh, they're just, sometimes you're speeding 'cause you're spacing out. I mean, let's face it, or, or just not as attentive to the change in speed limit. And I, I think they can be effective in grabbing drivers' attention, and, and so that's certainly something that I would take a look at. I, we've also talked in the past about other things, um, that can help improve the visibility of, uh, people using the crosswalks in the village, and, um, things like having a little, uh, for lack of a better word, sort of quiver of, uh, of, uh, flags, you know, that people, that can live on, on the light poles on either side, end of the crosswalk, and so you could pick one up, and, and it's a flag that you could just sort of wave around and grab drivers' attention. But the, the reality is that, that, um, the problem that we're experiencing is, is that, and you read about this in the news, is that drivers just don't really care, and they just wanna speed, they wanna go the speed they wanna go. They don't, they don't, I mean, I, I know that Mary Sweeney Underwood has shared that she gets yelled at for crossing the streets in the village, um, you know, a- a- on the crosswalks. I mean, she's legitimately in, within her rights to be in the crosswalk, and drivers will roll down their windows and swear at her. So, um, you know, obviously, flags aren't gonna help that problem, but, um, a reminder about the speed limit might. Um, so, I, personally, I would be inclined to, to consider that carefully.
Yeah. Go ahead, Matthew.
I think I agree with Ann. I know from my own reaction, you're not gonna get everyone, but from my own reaction to those, um, signs that are telling you, "You're going too fast", and, you know, to slow down. you're going too fast and, you know, to slow down, I respond to those more, you know. I think there are also lower costs, just like with a flashing border for the sign, or flags on the sign. I think all of those are, you know, valid approaches. But I know from my own response that I tend to respond to those radar speed signs more than other signs.
I just would also note, a free solution could also be, I know New Gloucester has implemented this. They just recruited a bunch of people to be pacers. And so they drive the speed limit up and down, especially two thirty-one, and it infuriates the speeders behind them, but they stick to their guns, and so to speak, and to the speed limit. And that's an effective way, it just, you know, and it's at no cost other than the cost of organizing. So it might be something to think about.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, and I'd also like to see, aside from just speed signs notifying you how fast you're going in the village, I would be in favor of exploring that. But I would also like to see some school zone flashing lights on Short Shaker. I know that we have signs posted right now with hours noted, but they're extremely ineffective. And if anyone's ever been in the drop-off line for Russell School, or even Fiddleheads for that matter, it's extremely busy to the point where traffic backs out onto twenty, what was twenty-six, and now it's just Short Shaker. And I think it would be some use, especially for the two different schools that exist on or off of Short Shaker Road. Yep, oh, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to mention, we've made, my previous community, similar investments in those speed signs, and I think, based on the council feedback, I'll plan to include funding for some of those in the capital improvement plan, and we'll work to identify the best locations. As far as the village ones, we'll want to be, work to maybe try to get temporary ones, so they're not, when village construction takes place, they're not just disposed of, and we can maybe relocate them. And then as the village plan gets developed, there'll be pedestrian safety improvements included in that, and so that will help with slowing down traffic and things of that nature. So there'll be permanent solutions coming as part of the Village Transformation Project, but we can work to identify some of the signs you talked about in the future capital improvement plan.
Yeah, I agree that incorporating traffic calming measures in the road design is really going to be the most effective, whatever those might be. You know, those are generally based on science and, you know, actually get results.
Yeah. Noted. Okay, Joseph, you were mentioning issues with your well, and I'm sorry to hear about your neighbor. That's really unfortunate. I, as you know, the town isn't involved in people's private wells, maintaining those. But certainly, as you mentioned, the town water, I believe you said was only a mile and a half from your well. And as Dan, I think, or maybe someone else mentioned it, but we were exploring potential opportunities to partner with Portland Water or expand the reach of Gray Water District, or perhaps both. And those, while not immediate, are certainly on the council's radar. And then...
Gray Water District, which is separate from the municipality. It does have desires to expand down into South Gray.
Yeah.
I mean, we even went to the extent of digging another dug well, and we're still in the process of trying to make that potable water.
That's awful.
And the thing is, we're literally like right next to the, kind of a river. So it's just like, you know, all this water, but none of it's usable for what you want.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, it's a waste of money.
Right. Sorry to interrupt. Just a point of information for people in the audience. If you speak to us, we can hear you, but people at home can't. So if you want to elaborate, you're welcome to come to the podium. I can just paraphrase what you said, that you've dug another well in search of potable water, and it's not successful. I have a private well myself, and it sounds like your uranium levels are much higher than mine, though I did have uranium issues in my well also. And we did have to install a filter system for our drinking water. But I heard you say earlier that yours are at a level that even washing dishes is unsafe. So that is certainly concerning, and it's nice to know about it. I did not know that was an issue for residents here in town.
It just wasn't our house as well. The houses around it tested.
Right. It sounds like it was an issue in South Gray. So that, you know, we can certainly communicate that to the Water District also. Perhaps they might be able to remediate some of it.
And I would just add that I think the Department of Health and Human Services recommends testing your well water, I don't know if it's annually or every two or three years, but in any event, just as a public service thing, we ought to mention that people ought to get their wells tested. I mean, it's at your own expense, but yeah, you ought to know it's in your...
Yeah, and I, that's a good point, Matthew. And perhaps we could put together some resources just to have on our website for people to know where to go for testing and things, because there are so many individuals and households in town with private wells.
You could just link to DHHS.
Yeah.
I just have a few things to add along with that thought process.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Joseph.
Is that as a consumer, I only use the Maine State Lab in Augusta because anybody else coming out to your house is trying to sell you something, and it probably isn't even going to get you what you need to have healthy drinking water. The biggest problem from having been a lone officer and working with underwriting, and then specifically for these rural types of property that we have in Gray and Gloucester, is that most of the checkboxes for tests for new homeowners, even if they do test the water, they're only looking for lead. They're only look, so the fact that if the, if the water is sent to the lab in Augusta, you need to indicate that you want it tested for everything. The other concern right now, of course, as you all heard, is PFAS. There is only one lab right now here in Maine that does PFAS testing. Augusta is trying to add it to their panel of tests, but that's also another huge consideration, given the history here in Gray with the Superfund site out on Mayall Road. You know, I remember when my mother-in-law came to visit me years ago, she's like, "Why are there fire hydrants out, and you're at Dairy Farm in the middle of the country?" And I'm like, "Well, there's a story behind that." But I think if we're going to broadcast something to the greater community, that they really be, the tests aren't cheap. It is what it is, but like I said, when you call up these water companies, or even the companies that claim they do radon, they're not necessarily testing for every chemical we're giving you a product that will actually work. And as Ron indicated earlier, a lot of the sink tap ones for like your kitchen area, you do end up with low-grade uranium sitting under your sink, and that's just accumulated, and that isn't healthy either. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
One quick follow-up comment. I looked around at different water testing companies, and all the, most of the commercial ones that advertise don't even test for this at all. So if you're not knowing, and you say, "Oh, I want to see what my water is," and you call, most of the companies out there that are advertising, the flyers or wherever you see it, you're going to get, "Oh, your water's great." Or they're looking to sell you some product, too. But they're not testing for the things that we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
I would just add that Department of Health and Human Services has, you know, a list of certified labs that provide the analysis you need. I mean, the Health and Environmental Testing Lab in Augusta is one of them, but there are also private labs that aren't connected to selling you treatment systems that provide certified testing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it sounds like you guys have already, you know, sadly, had to do a bunch of this research, and I wonder if you could be resources for us as we create the information. So maybe, I'm trying to think of how best. My name is Ann Gass. You could contact me, and maybe we could talk about it. My contact info is on the website, under the council.
Thanks, Ann. And while that doesn't have a direct budgetary impact, I think we can, we can work to at least inform the public of the issue. Pam, I just want to acknowledge what you've commented on. I certainly, I think we are all in agreement as a council that we would definitely like as much transparency as possible during this budget process. I don't think last year's process was ideal from anyone's perspective. And while we are grateful that it resulted in a positive vote at the September town meeting, we certainly are aware that we need to work harder on informing the public, and that's one of the reasons we're having this info session tonight. And to your point about the mil rate, that's one of the things we definitely want to be figuring out sooner, and at least giving people a ballpark of where we're landing in the process. Dan?
Yeah, I'm going to take issue a little bit. I think last year's budget process was extremely transparent. It was wrought with errors and very confusing, but it was all done very publicly.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
And personally, somewhat embarrassingly. But we have to own the mistakes we make, and we made mistakes last year, such that we planned to do things significantly different this year in an attempt, not so much to be more transparent than we already are, but to be less confusing and more concise, such that it's much easier to keep track of what the heck we're up to. Not only for the public, but for ourselves. I also think the, the mil rate is an interesting question. The mil rate is only part of the equation. One of the issues that I've found over the years with the budget is that people tend to remember the last number that they heard, which isn't necessarily the most recent number or the most accurate number. And this also figures into the confusion that's generated by us having, you know, several dozen meetings about the budget and several dozen revisions of the same parts of the budget, and it all adds to that confusion. And that was very apparent at the town meeting in September. People came to that meeting with different understandings of, in some instances, previous revisions of the budget. As painful as people thought the meeting was last September, I thought it was great. I know that puts me in a minority. But what happened is, over the course of that meeting, is that we created a consensus of understanding about the budget, whether we agreed with the budget or not. And I think people also left understanding that the municipal budget process is a lot more complicated than most people think it is or understand it to be. So the end result, when we left there, was not only did we have a budget, but a couple of hundred people left the meeting understanding a lot more about the process. And I think we all want to build on that this year. The mil rate ultimately isn't going to be finalized until we get the school's information, and until we settle on a budget for ourselves. And the school's portion drives the mil rate much more than the town's portion is. So I know that Mike plans to introduce himself to the school board and to work with the school board. There are issues in the way the school does their budget, and the timing of when we actually find out what they have for a budget so that we can put together a mil rate. So it's not, it's not an attempt to dodge the question, but I do think that it is only one aspect of the issue. Valuation is another component that obviously drives the mil rate, no matter what the budget is. So I think we just have to get better, and I think we will get better at explaining all the different pieces and how they relate to one another.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I just, I was only around for part of the budget process last year. But, you know, from the outside for part of it, and on the inside for part of it. I mean, my impression is that there were a number of things that were highly unusual. There was a confluence of events that really just messed the whole thing up, and that we're not necessarily anybody's control, as much as we would like just to be in more control. I mean, we had, we lost our town manager. I mean, he resigned before our final budget, in-person budget day. You know, we had, we had staffing issues. I mean, there were, there were other things that were happening, and it was not a comedy of errors, but, you know, a tragedy of errors, perhaps. And I, you know, we're certainly very, you know, all of us came away from that budget process feeling like that was the worst experience we've ever had in our lives. We never want to repeat that. I think, you know, barring something unforeseen, we won't have that confluence of events, you know, dragging us down. We have a fine new town manager. It's going to just really help us steer through this process. But, and so, you know, we, this forum tonight is part of our commitment to the public to improve the opportunity for input early on before the budget gets more baked. And we really appreciate everybody's participation tonight, and we hope to repeat this in future years and get even more participation. So we really appreciate your coming out. And so I just want to point that out, because I, you know, there were just a lot of things that went wrong, and, or that, you know, made the whole process harder, is probably a better way to put it. We certainly hope those things don't happen again.
Can I make one more quick point?
Just one second. Let Dan speak, and welcome to come back up.
Just, I just wanted to speak to the audit, because I left that one.
Yeah, I was going to return to that, but go ahead.
You had raised that. We put an RFP out for audit services. We had been with HRH for forever, almost. We did, in fact, reach an agreement and hired a new auditor who died a couple of weeks later. And their firm was unable to take, to honor that contract, so we were stuck without an auditor. At a time when some municipalities don't have an audit firm working for them, because it's become extremely difficult. The larger firms have basically dropped municipal audits because they're having trouble finding people and doing their own work. After a period of time, we went, we put another RFP together, and interestingly enough, we have rehired our HR as our auditor. And they are working with Justine, and now will work with Mike, to get the 2023 audit done and put us in a position where we'll be able to get back on schedule with getting our audits done and our books reported out the way they should be and everybody wants to be. But the bad news is, it was delayed yet again. The good news is, we do have an auditor, auditing firm.
But it will not be ready in time for the conclusion of our budget process this year either.
Yeah. They've already informed us that, I believe that's accurate, that that's the case. That they're not going to be able to get it done in time for this budget vote.
Matt, did I see your hand, Matt?
Well, I guess I would also like to add my thanks to folks that came to talk to us tonight. And hopefully, we can get more folks to address this throughout the process on the budget. That's my hope, anyway. And Dan already addressed this, but I want to address it, I guess, in my way, make sure I understand it correctly. But yeah, projecting what the mil rate is going to be is an impossibility for us as a town council. We can, we can do some sort of projection on what our possible impact on the mil rate is going to be. But because we don't know what the final budget's going to be, because we don't have any say over a majority of what, you know, what the contribution to the mil rate, what the mil rate's going to be, makes that impossible. But I think, yes, at least to know what our, what the percent change in particular items is going to be would be, just in terms of the, you know, the amount of expenditure or revenue, and have a comparison to the prior year. That would be a big improvement over our process last year. So, yeah, I think it's, you know, that's a good idea to have some idea of what the impact on the mil rate's going to be, but again, also valuation is a part of that equation. And, but whatever that's going to be, it's going to be a guess, because we don't really know what the mil rate's going to be.
Right. But I think we can come up with, like you said, our impacts to that mil rate, and also an estimation before we have final numbers. Mike, did you want to comment?
Yeah, if I may, just to add a few points, and also kind of share with the council and the public, my vision for improving the budget process with the, you know, work that the council is already, or building upon the work that the council has already done to improve the budget process. But as folks might know from my work in my previous community, that the financial integrity and stability of the organization, municipal organization or public organization, is priority number one. And so as part of the development of this budget, my priority will be to ensure...
this budget, my priority will be to ensure the financial stability of our organization for many years to come. And that's going to require some investment, because we need to establish appropriate checks and balances, and appropriate investment in time and positions to ensure that we accomplish what we need to do, and we maintain the integrity and transparency for the public. And so, and the budget that I'm, that I'm working on in my early days will support that. But from the big picture standpoint, I think I can, in this same meeting next year, I think I'll be able to provide an estimate on both proposed budgets and potentially the tax rate, based on proposed budgets. Again, it will be proposals, and there'll be, there'll be a lot of work that needs to happen. I hope to, in the coming days, understand what the superintendent of schools' proposed budget is, and that involves work that's going to happen during that process, so I can begin. The assessor is, in addition to the town manager, one of the positions that's appointed by the council. And the assessor in all municipalities in Maine essentially serves as an agent of the state, because state valuation is extremely critical and important. And so they have a role and responsibility that needs to be undue of political influence. And so we need to be very strategic in that. From a growth and development standpoint, we can certainly develop a rough estimate with the support of the assessor of what valuation growth is, and potentially provide an estimated tax rate. And I've done that in my previous community, and will do that here in the big picture. When I introduce the budget to the council, hopefully later this month, I will have that. I will have that information, and I will have a tax rate estimate for the public to know. So from the general public just coming to the assessor, yes, they're a public employee, and they want to know details about all that stuff. Other than tax records that have been committed to, they, everything else is kind of in its infancy and needs to be committed. And after April 1st, when the tax commitment is set, the assessor works between April 1st and the end of the fiscal year in order to develop the finalized mill rate. And so they will work to that, and will complete our budget process by then, and then they will provide us a finalized mill rate at the end of that process, in the beginning of the fiscal year, before we begin to issue property tax bills. And so I'm very confident that folks will be impressed with the process that I'm able to help forecast, and make the appropriate investments, and help with transparency in the budget. We also hope to, in addition to avoid confusion, provide as much information as possible about budgets to the public in the council in the beginning, so they have as much information as possible. And that will involve a different style of presentation for our department heads, and a different style of presentation for me, and the schedule and things of that nature. So I'm hopeful that the suggestions and work that I'll do will be well received by the public here. In my previous community, it's been very well received, and we've made a process that was much more confusing and cumbersome to a much more efficient and straightforward transparent process. And I'm hopeful that I'll be able to help the town with that.
Great.
Oh, and then just as far as the audit is concerned, you know, I'm in here just a number of days, and I'm going to work to get that. There's going to be, need to be some extra work associated with the finance, financials with the town, and our auditing team is going to help support us for that. But we hope to get that done as soon as possible, so we can have as much information even later into the budget process. But typically, Dan is absolutely right. Municipal auditors are few and far between. I had a counselor in my other community last night get mad at us because we had the same auditing firm for 10 years. Government accounting standards suggest that you should at least a minimum change the auditing team, not necessarily the firm. And so they've done that, so we've been complying. The last time we bid, only one person bid. And the last time you guys bid, two people bid and one person died. And so the, there's not a lot of municipal auditing firms out there. And the firm that we use in my previous community just got bought out by a firm, a county firm in Chicago, and they were a major firm in Portland. And so there's not many of them. And so we'll have to do in future years, essentially, a recruiting effort for auditors to submit. But there's not a lot of them for municipal governments, and it's really, really tough. And they have a lot on their plate. So from when people finalize their books in August, September, they're working diligently to try to get as many audits as possible done. So hopefully, in future years, as I'm able to get everything settled with the audits, that we'll hopefully have an audit presented to the council in as early as January, if not sooner, if possible.
That's what we used to have.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike, for that background and information. Pam, you had an additional comment?
Well, now I have another one. So, sorry.
You have to wait until you get to the microphone before you start talking.
Sorry. So you're talking that the audit won't even be done for a year from now?
No.
No, it just won't be.
Oh, I thought you said January next year.
I'm saying in the future.
That would be the future audit.
Yeah, okay. It will always be done by January. Oh, perfect. That's, that's best-case scenario. Absolutely. Okay. All right. So I just had one thing I wanted to say, something Dan said. Dan, you went and said something that was said during, during the budget process that definitely got misled, and I just wanted to just throw it out there, so we don't, this is the kind of stuff that we don't want to be doing. You said something about the school usually drives the budget. And if you guys all recall, that is what we were told on our very first budget meeting, that the school was going to be the biggest portion of our tax increase this, this last fiscal year. And it didn't end up being that way at all. It was, we were the bigger piece of the pie.
We were about equal last year.
Yeah, we were not the bigger piece.
We weren't, but that's fine. We weren't. But we might have been after we took some money out of funds. But I'm just saying that with the, the mill rate, you know, I do appreciate what you guys had to say tonight, and you, Mr. Foley, that I think that we have a fabulous assessor. I'll just tell you that right now. I know it firsthand. And she's darned good, and she, she's never going to give out information that she doesn't say, you know, I mean, this is, this is close, but, you know, but she's excellent. I know that. And, you know, I mean, anybody that's, you know, going to go vote on a budget, and by the time the ballots are made, we should certainly know the mill rate, right? I mean, we're going to have, the birding is going to be on the budget. So we should know well before we go to the polls what the projected mill rate is going to be. I know that she's got things that she has to do, but she's, she's a smart cookie. So, just saying.
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Pam. And then just lastly, I want to acknowledge, you made, Pam, you also were inquiring about the assistant clerk position, and you're correct that it was supposed to be a position split between finance and the clerk's office and also rec. But I don't...
No, clerk's office and finance is what it was proposed.
It was clerk's office, finance, and recreation department. It was a shared responsibility.
Okay.
But I, as Mike's transitioning in, you know, certainly he might reassess what the need is there and...
Yeah, no, I would encourage, I would really strongly encourage, I would like to see him, like, hold off on any, I would like him to watch for a year and see what goes on, and see what the need is, because, you know, I came from that office, and I think I have a pretty good handle on that we have some busy times during elections and stuff, that we don't necessarily need a clerk for the whole year. We need, we need everybody to pitch in, you know, during, during those times. It was always all hands on deck during presidential elections, during the governor's race, to help out. It's not necessarily you add another person for the entire year.
Yeah.
So there are things you can do. I did want to mention one more thing that I would really like to see, because we've had so many new hands in the pot, and, you know, some different things going on with our finance director leaving abruptly, and not having, you know, the, kind of the changing of the guard, where somebody sits with somebody for six weeks and helps them learn the process. You know, our new one kind of got brought in, and she had none of that. We've always had the changeover, where somebody stays for four, you know, for four weeks, helps the next one along and moves along. And, you know, I would really like to see us consider doing, while we're doing this, because, Mike, you're coming on new, and because there has been some, have had some problems in the past. You know, possibly a payroll audit as well. And obviously, I'm not going to speak, I'm just throwing that out there. I'd be glad to speak with anybody why they think I might.
Yeah, our HR director is certainly looking at our payroll accounts, and whether or not we're, you know, on top of those things. And I'm sure Mike will take a look, and our auditors going through our FY25.
Yeah, I don't know that they do one without you asking, but I would, I would encourage you.
Thanks, Pam.
All right, I'm done.
And then I just...
Can I just say one more thing? Mr. Foley, I heard you like basketball, and I just want to say that right now, I'm on my way to the Gray and Gloucester varsity boys' basketball game, and I want you to know until last night, they were 13, they were 14-1. They had won their last 13 games in a row, and they lost last night to Noble High School, much to my dismay.
They've had a phenomenal season.
And so, you might want to be checking out one of those games when we get to the States in Portland. Okay?
I'm sure we're all going to be rooting for them, yeah?
Yes, because they have been a total joy to watch. All right. I'm going there now. Goodbye, everybody. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Goodnight, Pam.
And I just want to acknowledge Ron's comment about ADA accessibility for individuals with mental disabilities. We do not have any publicly funded affordable housing in town, at least that's municipally run. We do have some senior housing that's run by Avesta Housing in town, and I believe Apple Tree Village is also affordable. But we don't have any municipality-run, municipally-run affordable housing, but it's certainly good to know that those regulations exist, if we were to pursue that in the future.
I just know, that's, that's an area of expertise for me, so if you want to talk with me about it, I'd be happy.
Just one more factoid, just, I'm, my, my goal is to educate as many people that will listen. But just one more factoid. It's very difficult to find, I'm a physician of traditional Chinese medicine and acupuncture, so I have a four-year degree, and half of that is Western medicine, because you have to understand how to read a chart when you're in hospital. When you try to look online at the statistics of how many homeless people are on the spectrum, it's an impossible number to grab. If you've been abusing drugs and alcohol for long periods of time, you then present yourself very similarly to people on the spectrum. So it's the chicken or the egg. So that's an impossible number to find. I've been trying to find something that I will never find. But what's most important is, the statistics that is attainable, how many young adults become homeless when the last parent or relative guardian dies? And that number is staggering. And we need to save those young adults from becoming homeless into that pie. When you're acting 12-years-old, and that's all you're capable of, and now you're with druggies and alcoholics, what 12-year-old isn't easily influenced, and then they become that statistic. And it's frightening. And most people I've ever talked to about this never put those two things together. I hope, this is the first time, if it's the first time you've ever heard it, just please retain this information and pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, certainly a complicated issue. Okay. Last call and any comments related to the budget? Okay. Any counselors have any last thoughts? Okay. I just wanted, again, thank everyone for the time, for coming out, and we hope to do this more in the future. And also, I would encourage folks to just keep an eye on our meetings going forward. We're, as I said, at the very beginning of crafting the FY25 budget, and there's, we hope to do it a little bit differently this year, but certainly are continually looking for public engagement. So just keep an eye on our meetings and what's coming down before the June referendum on the budget itself.
Yeah, and I would just note that even if it's not a public meeting where, you know, like tonight, you can, you know, there's a lot of interaction with the council, you can call a council member at any time. All of our, our contact information is on the website, and you're welcome to call any of us at any time. And the meetings are always hybrid, so you can come to the meetings, or you can watch them online. They're always recorded. You can watch them later if you're not available on that night. So just make that point.
Good point. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I'm going...
Public service manager.
Right, exactly. All right. So we're going to adjourn our workshop at 7:04 PM, and then we're just going to take a quick five-minute break before we resume for our 7 o'clock regularly scheduled meeting. So we will be back here at 7:09 PM. Thank you, everyone.